David, did you have any questions about this approval not required plan?
No, you explained it very clearly, John. Thank you.
Okay. Well, this is working. So you can call for...
He hears you through the laptop.
Oh.
So that's why he's hearing you.
Yeah.
Sorry, thanks, Ken.
Can you hook these up, Caleb, so that he...
Not right now.
No?
I don't think we have that set up in here.
I didn't know it was a button you push.
I'm sorry.
Is this laptop or this laptop?
That one.
This one.
Maybe that one could be directional mic.
Like this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe that way the mic can pick up a little...
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
Why don't you sit and Craig see, and then yours can be posted to the laptop together?
Sounds good.
That's a good idea.
Is that okay?
The old switcheroo.
Is that all right to do?
Yeah. All right, okay. Got to have those plaques in the right place.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's going to get dizzy, and the room's going to start spinning, and... Okay.
So when you do take a vote, it should be a roll call vote.
Great. So are we ready for a vote on this? Gents, ladies?
If John could read the motion, I'd be glad to vote.
Okay. It's to endorse the approval not required plan for 26 Nathan Walker Road slash zero Cherokee Road and determine that the plan does not depict a subdivision under the subdivision control law.
I... Yeah, it's so garbled. I had no idea what you just said, John.
Okay.
That was you.
Yeah. Okay. The motion is to endorse the approval not required plan for 26 Nathan Walker Road slash zero Cherokee Road and determine that the plan does not depict a subdivision as defined under the subdivision control law.
Okay, that was clear. I can understand that. Thank you.
Can you vote positively or negatively on that, David?
Go second the motion.
Second. We have a second, sorry.
Okay, the motion has been made. It's been seconded, David.
Aye.
Aye for Dave Harris, Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Done. Great. Thank you for your patience and our technical difficulties.
Well, thank you and your committee members very much.
My pleasure.
We're actually going to sign the approval not required... Michael? We're going to sign this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Save you some time. Why don't we just have... We don't actually, you know, the chair can sign for the board. Since we only have three members signing,
Yep.
we might as well just have the chair sign, and I would just indicate Duncan Berry, Chair.
John, if it's helpful, I can... But tomorrow we need four seconds. Do you not need that?
No, Chair is fine to sign.
Do you want me to put 22 February?
Okay. We'll just sign one of these for our records.
John, should we call her?
Well, let's call after we do the... I mean, if you want to call her, that's fine. I was thinking we'll do the public meetings and then call her if we have more time to show up. Okay. Mike, this is all set. It's not raining out, is it? My Larson. It should be dry by then.
Thank you.
Okay.
My pleasure.
Good to see you, Mike.
Okay, our second item in the public meeting portion of the meeting is case number PB 2022-06. Russe Trust Owner seeks endorsement of an A&R Plan to create a single perimeter lot under MGL Chapter 41, Sections 81L and 81P, and Sections 409 and 11 of the Harwich Code. Property is located at 17 Gray Neck and 78 Shore Road Extension. That's Assessor's Lot ID 5-P1-6B and -P1-6.
Five.
-five, excuse me.
David, we've just opened the matter on the Gray Neck Road approval not required plan. This is the plan. You see, the proponent actually is not here tonight. He's a Province Town Surveyor, and that's like a world away. So, and, you know, there are approval not required plans that require a lot more discussion. We've had one of those in the past year, but by and large, an approval not required plan is ministerial or administrative in nature. This is the quintessence of a ministerial A&R Plan. In fact, this is a plan that probably... It certainly didn't need to go to the planning board. This is just a perimeter plan, and they're getting rid of interior lot lines. It is a land... The property involved is registered or Land Court property. It comes from two certi... Land Court certificates of title and two Land Court plans. For that reason, the engineering department and the Land Court basically asked the proponent to take this through and get a planning board endorsement. It probably didn't need that. It probably could have been signed by the surveyor under another section of the Mass General Laws, but with Land Court, if they ask you to do something, you do it. You don't ask them about their rules, or you don't cite them law. They ask you to do it, and so that's what they're doing. They're here to ask for endorsement of a plan that, in my opinion, doesn't really require the planning board's endorsement.
Right.
Wholeheartedly, you know, suggest to you that this is entitled to endorsement.
There any questions?
I have a question that has no bearing whatsoever on the vote, just out of curiosity. Does anybody know why there's that little strip? And I think it's identified originally as... I can't tell, but it looks like there's one little...
6A.
6A.
Thank you, yes.
I wouldn't be surprised at some point if it was some sort of access.
Probably a walkway.
I wondered if it was a walkway all the way through or something at some point. Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, that's all. So, yeah, all those... I mean, in one sense, too, from a zoning perspective, three of these... Well, really, all of these lots are probably considered... All the parcels are probably considered one lot for zoning purposes anyway, but on the record with the Land Court, they're actually recognized as, you know, separate parcels.
Right.
So this actually has the benefit of kind of conforming... We'll conform the Land Court records with the way we treat things for zoning and assessing purposes. But bottom line is, it's entitled for endorsement because it doesn't represent a subdivision. It's the antithesis of a subdivision.
So would you like to articulate the motion?
Oh, yeah. The motion would be to endorse the approval not required plan for 17 Gray Neck Road and 78 Shore Road Extension and determine that the approval not required plan does not constitute subdivision as defined under the subdivision control law.
Go second the motion?
I can't make the motion, so who moved that?
So move.
So move.
Second. And we have a second. Dave, would you care to vote?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. We also have approval of minutes from our previous package from the 14th of December and the 14th of January. Were there any comments that were made on that, any? It looked immaculate as usual. Thank you very much.
To make a motion.
John fixes them up before they get to you.
Ah.
Team effort.
Ah, team effort. Well, they look immaculate. So we have a...
Make a motion. We accept, excuse me, the meeting minutes of Tuesday, December 14th and Tuesday, January 11, 2021.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
No, we're all called.
Excuse me, Mr. Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. We also have apparently a Board of Appeals cases coming up and Chapter 91 applications to discuss.
Yeah, you know, looking at the Zoning Board of Appeals agenda, you know, much of it is just standard changes to pre-existing non-conforming single-family properties. The one matter that I thought was particularly relevant to the agenda tonight is a request for Aaron Gingras, who is a farmer in Harwich, owns property in the town. He is looking for a dimensional variance for a lot he has off of Oak Street that ties into directly, you know, something on our agenda. It's why it's being withdrawn, because he was looking for what's called an alternate access special permit so he could take access to the property from some point not the property's frontage. That is presumpt... I mean, at this point, it's presumptuous because he first has to show that the lot is buildable. Yeah, so the lot isn't... Doesn't meet minimum standards. Unless and until he can get that variance, there's no reason to entertain a special permit for what's called alternate access. So he is on the Zoning Board of Appeals agenda
Okay.
to seek a dimensional variance for that lot off of Oak Street. That was the only Zoning Board of Appeals matter that I thought was particularly relevant. And then for the, you know, as a matter of... As a matter of state regulation, planning boards are required to get copies of what's called Chapter 91 applications. You know, I guess it looks good under the law. It looks transparent that local boards have to get copies of things. I don't know what a... I don't know what a planning board would do with a Chapter 91, you know, application or permit. The point of Chapter 91 is that someone is doing something in what's called a public trust area, usually, you know, a public trust area of a great pond or a shorefront area. And the whole purpose of Chapter 91 is to make sure that, to the extent public rights are interfered with, that it's mitigated in some way. So, I mean, it's clearly something... Conservation has jurisdiction over that same area, and to the extent there are impacts to the wetland, the Conservation Commission can deal with it. In terms of, you know, that Chapter 91 property rights issue, I really don't know what a planning board would say in a kind of a small town like Harwich, but... So none of the Chapter 91 permits are, you know, particularly, you know, interesting. They're pretty run-of-the-mill. They all deal with maintaining existing floats or docks in great ponds or coastal areas within the town.
And one other item that's going to be coming up next week is correspondence leading up to our discussion with Sarah of the Cape Cod Commission, so I guess that'll be on our docket for the meeting on the 8th.
Yeah, on the 8th, the Cape Cod Commission is going to present draft design guidelines for the West Harwich Special District. That will not be the hearing for these. That will just be kind of a work session, a presentation to the planning board. In order for the planning board to actually approve them, you'd have to have a public hearing, open that to the public,
Right.
and so on. This will not be that forum for a hearing. Happen at some later time, hopefully sometime in April.
Right.
But we're expecting that on the 8th, and then we have some regulatory matters for the 22nd of March, as of right now, a subdivision and a use special permit. I guess, you know...
Want to give Mary a call then?
Yeah, do you have Mary's number? No? Okay, I will give her...
Do you want me to see?
Why don't I call her? In the meantime, if you could pass this around, Duncan, this is an ethics receipt.
Okay.
Shows that you've, you know, reviewed your ethics law for the year and that you've received them.
Right, I have got to do... I have yet to do that.
Okay, well, you can't sign it.
So I can't sign it.
Thank you for being honest and ethical.
I'm being honest here.
Very ethical.
Full disclosure. Would you like me to call her, or?
I don't have her number.
I can go do it.
Okay.
Can you sign this?
Yes.
I have an email.
Right here, probably.
So just same thing, Chair.
Yep.
And we'll keep the paper one. I have Mary's number, so I will go...
I have Mary's number right here.
Two, 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 two.
At 2:22.
Really?
AM, PM, I know.
Yeah, exactly.
I can't sign it either.
Oh.
I haven't read the damn thing.
Okay.
Probably won't.
I've gone through it a couple times. I don't know why it isn't good. You have to keep going through every 12 months or something, so...
12 months, yeah.
Is it 12, or is it a year or two?
One year.
Oh. I thought I read something about two, but...
Yeah. I signed it last year.
I thought I remembered reading two, because I was about to take it and say, well, wait a minute, I've got last years here, and I thought I read something.
Mary can call in for the meeting. Can you just give her those instructions that we have?
Yeah, and you have to unlock it on your phone. I mean, I'm sorry, on your... Make sure to unlock it.
Okay, Mary, I'm going to give you the call-in instructions.
And then...
First of all, let me unlock this. Oh, no, that's okay. Yeah, we're just stuck in the small room, so, yeah. So here, here's the call-in, though. Yeah, it's not... We don't have it on the agenda because the meeting isn't virtual. Yeah, and then here's the access code. Okay, thanks. No problem? Okay, bye.
Okay, we're a couple minutes away, right?
Yeah.
Great.
Well, she's going to call in.
Great.
Yes. President's day.
Of course.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If it works, and I hope it does, is it okay if I sort of stand over John to speak so that they might be able to hear me better?
Oh, yeah. I mean, do you want to pull a chair right up?
Yeah.
Well, I think... I don't mind, but from what I heard before, it sounds like that microphone's on the directional.
Directional, yeah.
Okay.
Well, however you want to do it.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Let's make it work.
Yeah, thanks. Well, we'll see if she gets in. Thanks.
Caller one must be Mary. No?
That's been up there.
Oh.
Wishful thinking.
Caller win, you win $4,000. Lot of siren activity. Need my scanner.
Caller...
We took us out to John.
Oh, Mary.
There's Mary.
Yes. Mary, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear. So we're going to open up a public hearing for case number PB 2022-3... Excuse me, 2022-2. Coachman Harwich Property Owner LLC.
You were right the first time.
Oh, I was. What am I... Yeah, I'm sorry.
2222.
Yeah. 22... 2022-02, Aaron Gingras, owner, applicant.
No.
That's withdrawn. You want the next one?
Yeah, that's what I... But that's what I thought I was...
No, that's okay. We can do that before...
Right.
Oh, my apologies.
All right, well, let's just do number one and then number two. Owner applicant, number 2022-02, Aaron Gingras, owner, applicant, seeks approval use of a special permit for alternate access via Woody Glen Road pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-51 and 18.K. The property is a portion of 0 Oak Street, Assessor's ID 60-R1 in the RM zoning district. We have a request to withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah, I'll try not to belabor this too much. I would recommend that you allow the withdrawal without prejudice. I got into this a little bit by talking about the Zoning Board of Appeals agenda, but it really is kind of a waste of time to consider an alternate access special permit before we know whether the lot is buildable. Because of course, you know, access and frontage really only matters if you're talking about the buildability of a lot. If you just own a piece of property, you can get there any which way that you can legally get to the property.
Right.
So, you know, if they get the variance, I'm sure they will be back here asking for an alternate access special permit, and if in fact the Zoning Board of Appeals does determine the lot is buildable, the frontage or the access, as Aaron suggests, is much better than access off of Oak Street, because you can leave a nice vegetated buffer along Oak Street, et cetera, but at this point, that's premature. So I would recommend that... It's my recommendation that you allow the request to withdraw without prejudice.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Chairman?
No second?
This is Mary.
A big pardon, Mary?
Yes, I would note that we agreed to allow the applicant, owner applicant, Aaron Gingras, to withdraw his application under case number PB 2022-02 without prejudice at this time.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's have a vote. Dave Harris?
Oh, boy.
Dave, do we still have you?
David, did you pick up any of that?
He's got to be muted.
I wonder if we're muted.
Muted. He's got to be muted.
Dave, are you there?
Well, we can't be muted because Mary heard us.
Right.
Oh, I heard you. I had my phone muted, and I didn't notice it, so I said, David Harris, aye.
David Harris, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Mary Masowski?
Hello, welcome.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Okay, it is withdrawn. So finally, case number PB 2022-3. Coachman Harwich Property Owner LLC has applied for a site plan review special permit and a special permit for use of structures greater than 7,500 square feet. The applicant proposes reuse of the property for seasonal employee housing, offices, and a year-round manager's apartment. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-9, -51, and -55. The subject property is 774 Route 28, Assessor's ID 24/TI-T1-1, located in the CH-1 and R-R zoning districts. Mr. Singer? Yes, please.
Good evening. For the record, Andrew Singer, Attorney in Dennisport. With me is Bill Gancher, Representative of the Property Owner, and Brian Weiner from Coastal Engineering Project Engineer. This is the Coachman Motel.
Mr. Chair, I cannot hear Mr. Singer. Can he speak into a microphone better?
Yeah, can you just... Maybe you can pull up a chair here.
Right.
I think that would be better.
Probably get lower and closer. I would think that might be... There we go.
Mary and Bill, can you hear me now?
No, David.
David and Bill, I'm sorry. David and Mary, I'm sorry.
We've infected you.
Can you hear me, Mary?
No, I can't.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry about that. So this is for the Coachman Motel, and the new owner, who is proposing to use it as mostly seasonal employee dormitory housing for Witchmere employees, we have gone to the Board of Appeals and obtained the use variance, somewhat like the case you were talking about before. The dormitory use, while it's defined and noted in the zoning bylaw, is actually not allowed as a use, and that's why I'm not sure if we need a use special permit for over 7,500 square feet, because the use is allowed by variance, but we do need site plan review. There's actually very little site. The buildings aren't changing. They're going to convert 24 of the rooms to... Well, not convert. They're going to have two employees in each, so 48. They're going to convert two of the rooms to office space for some staff members for Witchmere, and they are going to the lower front left of the property is where the dining area had been, the restaurant on the property. That's going to be the common dining area, living, hangout space for the staff. We do not believe... We believe it's worthy of approval. We don't believe... There's very few site changes, I said. The one big change, the swimming pool's coming out, and a septic leach field is going to go where the swimming pool is, and it's going to be grassed over. So while impervious coverage is conforming now, it's going to be going down, it's going to remain conforming. There are no impacts to wetlands, no impacts to drainage, no impacts to the floodplain. Traffic is going down because of the uses, a less intense use than the motel, and most of the employees will be using a shuttle van to get to work at Witchmere. There's a conforming number of parking spaces. We're not proposing any changes to the curb cuts or the parking other than fixing it up when the septic goes in where the pool is. We don't believe that any nuisances are hazards. I think the site's appropriate for the continued use. The Board of Appeals had thought that as well, and I'll really stop there. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Well, let's hear from the planner.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have... I don't want to belabor this one either. I think it's kind of a quirk that it even comes to site plan review. One of the triggers for site plan review, and we've seen this a few times over the past couple months, is a new use. So technically, this is a new use because it's been approved by way of a use variance for dormitory, and the existing use and the historical use has been for a motel. So it triggers that site plan review threshold, even though there really is no significant change to the site. The most significant change to the site is just taking the pool out, which radically reduces the amount of site coverage, and all of that will be vegetated with grass. It will cover over the new leaching facility for the upgraded Title V there. So I think it technically triggers Title V... Technically triggers site plan review, but there really is no significant site change. They're pretty much looking to use the property and the buildings in an as-is condition, and I think they're even reducing the number of motel rooms for the dormitory use. I believe it was also the building... Andrew had raised this issue, you know, does this need a use special permit for a building over 7,500 square feet? Of course, it's not the construction of a new building, but I think the Building Commissioner determined that this does not require a use special permit. Essentially, the variance did the job in establishing and approving the use that they're proposing. So Building Commissioner's opinion, and I share that opinion, that this does not need a use special permit for use of a building over 7,500 square feet in size.
Very good. Further discussion? Mr. Chadwick?
Question. I know it's not our bailiwick. The septic system is the bailiwick of the Health Department. Do they have to approve this plan, or have they approved it?
They do have to approve septic systems. They may have already. Maybe Andrew can give you some...
Yeah, it's... Brian Weiner with Coastal Engineering. It's been submitted. It's fully compliant with Title V. There's no request for anything other than...
Approval. Did you?
And then a follow-up to that. So the existing septic system is, if I read the map right, right next to 28, those, all those dotted lines, it says that's remaining?
Is it Brian?
Brian.
Can you come up?
Come up here and speak louder, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
But Brian Weiner with Coastal Engineering. So it's a fully compliant pressured distribution septic system because of the flow. There's an existing system on site for the common area, and we're proposing to keep that. It's fully functional.
Oh.
It passed Title V.
So there'd be two systems.
Okay.
Right. So we're actually... Stay up there.
Yeah, it's actually above and beyond Title V with keeping that.
Okay.
And this essentially replaces the cesspools that are old and didn't pass.
Okay.
So it's a traditional upgrade. There's no variances or anything out of the ordinary.
Great.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So essentially... So essentially, what he's saying is this didn't have to go to the Board of Health. It could be approved administratively. And in fact, I think the upgrade was necessitated by the mere conveyance of the property.
Right.
The back system failed, the front didn't. That was the upshot of during the sale.
Mary or Dave, do you have any questions?
No, it's very difficult to understand. I've just got fifteen pieces, but I, you know, I understand the objective, the objective based on your one half-page in the mailing.
Good.
But I haven't heard a motion, if there is one.
So I have a, Duncan, I have a question through you to John, if I could.
Yes.
So John, I see that, I see that in the recommended findings that we have that the new septic system is subject to approval by the Harwich Port of Health. Should we also have that as a condition? Or is it sufficient to have it just as a finding?
Yeah, I think it's fine. I mean, I try to put those things in as findings because it's part of your reasoning and making a decision, but I'm not sure that you can kind of independently require another body to approve something.
Okay.
So I think it's sufficient as a finding, and like I said, it may have already been approved already administratively through the Health Department.
John, this is Dave Harris. I did not receive anything that indicated what the findings were that Mary just referenced. Perhaps I'm missing some of the handout.
Yeah, this was, this was a matter that we had to continue over from one hearing. So you'd received a packet. The staff report I put together was in that first packet that was mailed out to you. And I, I forget-
Yeah, I have, I have that.
Okay, so it's a document that's titled PB 2022-03, Site Plan Special Permit, 774 Route 28 Harwich Port Planning Staff Report with a date of 1/10/222.
John, just to let you know, I had to pull that offline myself because it wasn't in my original packet either.
I understand that's been explained, and I didn't know, I didn't know to go online because I thought everything was just back there.
Yeah, I'm, well, I apologize for that. I'll, I know what I'll do with Elaine and a wet spaghetti noodle tomorrow. It is online right now. I don't know if you want a chance to review that?
David, are you near a computer? I can email it to you.
Yeah, I have my own computer right in front of me. I'm on Zoom, but I don't see any photos, any video of the meeting. The only thing I see is my own.
So you're on your computer, David. If you go onto the planning board page, you can, you can click into it that way.
That's okay. And that's going to delay everybody. I heard what he said, so we'll just move on now. Thank you, though.
You know, one of my big recommendations for technology will be to move on to something other than go-to-meeting because it's an incredibly clunky platform. And, you know, one of the, when we heard words like Zoom fatigue and they become part of the Oxford English Dictionary during that unfortunate part of our lives, we didn't have something called go-to-meeting fatigue because nobody uses it.
Right.
So I think things like the silver lining and meetings like this, as we know, that we probably need a better technology platform townwide.
We need more people to show up.
Mary does the motion. David can, David can hear it.
Leisha had a very good-
Thank you.
I do. A question, please.
Please.
So is the thought that this, assuming approval and everything goes as planned, that the structure will be essentially vacant during the off-season?
At this time, yes. It's not prohibited by the Board of Appeals. It could be used, you know, year-round for seasonal housing, but Witchmere is proposing to use it for seasonal employee housing at this time.
So if, if they wanted to, it's within the permitting structure, they could rent out individual rooms in the winter months?
It would need a major upgrade. It's seasonal, it's, it's, there's no insulation, the pipes aren't insulated.
Oh.
For Mary and-
I can't answer that.
It's ready to be seasonal. The answer to the question was legally, the property could be used in the winter, but Bill Gancher just noted that practically it could not because it's not winterized. But if the building was upgraded, yes.
Thank you.
So Mary, would you care to make a motion?
So if everyone's all set with questions, I will move to close the podium.
A second.
Roll call vote, Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye.
So Mr. Chair, at this point, I would move that we adopt the foregoing recommended findings of facts and conditions for approval in the staff report until PB 2023-03, special permit for 774 Route 28 Harwich Port dated January 10, 2022.
We have a motion, we have a second?
And along with-
Sorry, Mary, what?
I'm sorry, I was going to say, I was going to say, along with that, that we grant with conditions the site plan special permit approval to Coachman Harwich Property Owner LLC for 774 Route 28 Harwich Port, the 254 Queen Anne Road in case PB 2022-03.
Thank you. Now do we have a full second?
I'll make a second.
We have a second, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry is aye.
And I think I need to make a request to withdraw without prejudice. So much of the application is, was for the use special permit?
We didn't even advertise it.
Right.
Oh, you didn't even, oh, okay, great. Oh, okay. I just, I knew I had to applaud. Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the technology here. We appreciate it.
Good to see you, Mr. Singer. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
Don't know if we have any further business?
I don't think so.
So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Well, unfortunately, with roll call votes.
We still have to have a motion.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
A second?
On, Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye, with apologies for delaying the vote.
Not to worry. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Thank you all for participating remotely.
Thank you.[1796.36]